And you're good?
Okay. Good evening and welcome to the Milford Board of Selectment meeting for June 15th, 2015. Before we get started with the regular meeting, I'd like to take a moment to recognize a very special person who unfortunately passed away this past week, and that was Dennis Breen of Milford. Dennis was a man of character, common sense, and compassion, excellent coach, shaped the lives of so many young individuals, moved on, was an excellent school administrator, principal, superintendent, certainly Hope Dale's gain was Milford's loss, and just one of the finest persons that I've ever had the pleasure and the honor to know. So, behalf of his wife Kelly, his daughters Samantha, Shannon, Carolyn, our thoughts and prayers go with the Breen family, and I'd like to just ask for a moment of silence before we get started in Dennis's memory. Thank you. The first item that we have is the signing of the warrant.
Motion.
Motion made, seconded, any discussion, if not, all in favor, any opposed, that's unanimous. We have meeting minutes for June 1st, 2015.
Make a motion.
It wasn't here.
Motion made, I will second it. All in favor, any opposed? Are you abstaining?
Abstaining, yes.
Okay, two in favor, one abstention. Invitation to speak, is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the board on any issue not on the agenda? Okay, if not, we move to our public hearings and scheduled appointments. The first item that we have is with the town clerk, and I think I saw Amy, yeah, here she is. Amy, why don't you come on down? And you had given us some information about the precincts and voting locations in the town, and this appointment is at the request of Selectmen Kincaid. So with that, Will.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Amy, I certainly personally won't keep you long tonight. I just had a couple of questions that I was being asked, so rather than going through, me being a second party, I might as well ask the subject matter expert, and that's our town clerk. I loved all the information you provided us and everything, and I certainly don't have any questions about the precinct, the lines, how you and the state came about that. My only question personally is, do we, can we assign different precincts, not numerical order, to a voting location? So, could we have like four and six at a location because it's closer and they but however, that's why I wasn't trying to rewrite the districts or redraw them or have anything to that. I think you doing that every 10 years is more than enough work. I'm just was asking about that, how, you know, when people were asking me, they literally, if they live at the old club, they're actually getting in their car next to the Portuguese Club and driving to the senior center. So that's where my questions were, just, I know some towns don't necessarily have precincts, one, two, and then three, four, and five, six, seven, eight, all in one. So I just didn't know if you could help me understand that, and then...
Just in summary, the precincts are, they try to group them together and keep them as closely as possible, especially when they're looking for voting precincts. It's almost in the same pattern that they draw the lines, they would like to keep them continuously together. The actual locations, though, can be voted on by the Board of Selectmen and assigned a number that way, but that's something that we would also bring to town meeting to vote on. Okay, so that's something that could be done if that, if that's something you wanted to look into.
Yeah, and I certainly wouldn't want to, as one member of this board, I certainly wouldn't want to do that without your advice and counsel, but it just, it was kind of interesting to see people, up at the heights anyway, get in their car and drive to the senior center, and we had a lot of older folks up there that, well, those are the ones who called me anyway, that literally would, you know, just...
Their, even their spouses would walk down to the Portuguese Club.
I understand.
Absolutely, and again, this isn't anything new, because I think you and I know a lot of the same people, and you probably have already been asked a lot of these questions.
Right, I've been aware that there's an issue, and there, it's not just that precinct. There are some other precincts that are down the Cedar Street area that now have to travel much farther than the Italian Vets where they used to vote. It's not a perfect system, obviously, we're not trying to inconvenience any of the voters, and we're obviously not going to get them to not vote, that's not, obviously, not what we want to happen. They do have another avenue if they would like, as long as they cannot make it to the polling location within the polling hours, they are able to vote also by absentee. That is always an option for anyone who can't make it that day of election, but we definitely can look into, you know, changing.
Is that something that maybe you'd be, I just thought that this might be a good time to do it because you finally actually have the rest of the year without any elections before, because I know what, last year, the year before, you had, one year you had six.
Right, we have four next year.
You had four next year. So I was just thinking that if we were gonna look into this and we could actually work together, that this might be the time to do it. Because, you know, or at least figure it out if it's something, you know, at least come up with options and then say, because you may be able to tell me and tell the rest of us, see, but this can't work out because of this, this, and this.
Definitely something we can work together.
But at least we're, you know, making it, making an attempt, and then if it's something we wanted to go before the October town meeting with, maybe we could do that.
Definitely, we can involve the Board of Registars also in the process, too.
Okay, yeah, I just felt like going to you first was, first of all, the right thing to do, but also, like I said, you're the expert in this, so I'd rather just go to the source and figure out where we can go from there. So I would like to, if I can, you know, maybe Rick, or, you know, you can work with Amy to figure out a good time to get together, and I don't know if my colleagues are interested in trying to see if we can make it a little bit more convenient for some of these votes.
Well, let's everybody have a chance, and then we can decide on what action we might want to take.
Awesome, okay, well, I'm all set, that was my, that was my concern.
Okay, all right, Bill?
So, just to make sure I'm clear on it, nothing prevents us from changing voting locations for precincts?
No, you would vote on it at a board meeting, and then we would present it at town meeting as an act of special legislation to change the precinct numbers, and then we would go from there.
Precinct numbers that vote at the particular location?
Yes.
Okay. All right, and is there, you know, one of the things I didn't see, and I didn't, you know, know how, to what extent you've been looking at any of the unique challenges that have arisen since the last redistricting? And the reason why I ask that is, like with any good plan, it's not intended to be critical, there are times when you look at it and you go, well, in hindsight, I might not have done this piece of it, or I might not have done that. Is there anything in here with respect to precincts voting at different locations that you might do differently, or if you wanted to tweak it, you have recommendations, suggestions, or thoughts on?
Just recently, since the, the whole thing was brought up, I've been trying to come up with, we're very limited on where we can vote.
Sure.
Especially where they don't want to have it, in the schools, we're very limited, and other buildings are not handicap accessible, that's another limitation. Another avenue I can look into is maybe speaking with the Portuguese Club to see if the lower hall could also be accessible or added as another precinct. I would have to speak to the chief and fire also because of additional people coming in the parking lot and additional people in the building on voting day. That would be definitely something we'd have to discuss.
Yeah, I'm trying to understand to what extent you are thinking there may be, and I don't know if I'd characterize it as a problem, but a challenge with the last redistricting, and if there's anything that you have ideas about that you've already, you know, run through.
Well, the biggest challenge is the locations, because, again, where we can't vote in the schools, we're very limited, where we can physically have the voting locations. And if we were to add any additional places right now, thankfully, none of the buildings charge us to use their facilities for the elections, we're very, very thankful for that. If we look for any additional places, that might be something that would change also, being an additional cost to actually rent the buildings. And just handicap accessibility has been an issue in the past, parking's been an issue in the past, traffic flow, you know, those types of things is something that we work with every election, just to, you know, make sure we get them a little better each time, just to make sure we're improving and not going backwards.
There's nothing specifically you'd like to see come out of this that you'd like to see tweaked, adjusted, or wanted to accomplish?
We definitely would like, obviously, we try to make life easier instead of more difficult for people. That wasn't the intention when the precincts were moved at the Portuguese Club to make anyone's life difficult. And I'm definitely up, open to any change that we can do or, you know, implement in the future, even if it's before the next federal census, when any lines are drawn.
We have none off the top of your head?
I don't have any off the top, no.
All right, that's one thing, because I figured that was your role and your job, and I just wanted to see if there's anything that you had also been thinking about.
Well, I mean, there are always things that I'm thinking about, but it was, you know, cost, the vote of yourselves, it all depends on what the first step is to move to the next step, so. That'll be great for something for all of us to work towards.
Personally, I'd like to look into how do we make it easier for some of the people who live as close, in close proximity to the voting locations to have them voting at the most local, you know, the most convenient for them. As you said, we didn't redistrict this community to make it harder for anybody, but if that's a result, then my thinking is, this board and through, and with you, working cooperatively with you, we can certainly adjust to make things easier, and I'm all for that. So if there's a meeting, I'd like to participate in there. Or at least review proposals that have been worked out by people during the day. That would work for me as well. That's all I have, Jim.
Okay, just so we're clear, it seems as though, you know, there are basically two issues that are kind of being jockeyed about. One is the issue of going to the eight precincts, and, you know, that's something that can only happen every 10 years.
Every 10 years, yes.
So the way, the way I understand it, you know, these precincts are set at least for 10 years until the next census, depending on what the count is, the precinct lines can be redrawn.
Correct.
But I don't get the sense that that's really the issue in terms of the precincts, it's voting locations.
Yes.
That's what it is, so, so the eight precincts, I don't think is an issue. There's nothing we could do about that. Now, you know, I went through this material here, which dates back about 10 years, when we had gotten the recommendations both from the fire department, your office, the police department, and also the Board of Registars to move the voting locations from the schools into the present locations that we have, the senior center, the Portuguese Club, and the Italian Vets. And as I looked at that statute, Chapter 54, Section 24, I see it as just a vote of the Board of Selectmen. So I don't know that there is town meeting involvement. As I look at these, the memo that we got from the Board of Registars, which, you know, targeted the locations, it just talked about a timeline for the Board of Selectmen. And then there are a number of memos that came down from the police department and the fire department, because going to the Portuguese Club created a whole bunch of problems in terms of traffic flow, parking, and I think that the police department eventually got it in order, so it's manageable, but I do know that parking is a, is, can be a problem, particularly when you have a high interest election.
Absolutely, it's an issue at every precinct, actually, especially if it's a presidential election.
Yeah, so, we went through this about 10 years ago, when the thought was to move away from the schools for obvious security reasons. These were the locations that were recommended. This board can certainly entertain any other possible locations that may be, you know, more convenient for other people, and then ultimately, it would simply be a vote of this board whether or not to change the polling places.
Great, I was gonna ask, so we have Jerry review that, and I appreciate you doing that because something didn't sound right there.
Yeah, so, I mean, and, you know, there's a lot of different layers here, so I can understand that, you know, because you're talking about precincts and special legislation, but as I go back to, you know, what was done, that's how I take a look at 54, Section 24. So, it seems as though you'd be open to looking at different locations, and I would be more than happy to appoint one of my colleagues to work with you, and I don't know if you'd like to do it, or you had raised this issue, if you'd like to do that. I would defer to you as the senior member.
I'm okay, we'll raise the issue, and, you know, that's fine, I think, yeah.
Yeah, all right, so, why don't we appoint Will to work with you and come back at some point?
Well, I will say, Brian, my mother's on the Board of Registars, so I don't know if that's gonna be, if that's gonna be any issue or even appear that way, then I'd rather Bill do it.
Yeah.
And that's why I specifically went to Amy and didn't go to the board as well, so.
Okay.
You know, just for, just to throw it out there.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that that would raise any conflict.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think it's a real conflict, no, if it's gonna be...
But if you don't, you know, you two guys decide, whichever one wants to do it.
No, I appreciate that.
We can come back with you.
But I think the point is to at least have...
Especially if I get the personnel one, maybe.
He wasn't here, so. Either one of you, you know, I'll leave...
I'm just doing a Columbo.
I'll leave it up to both of you, and decide, you know, that you could work with Amy, you know, work at your own schedule, there's, like you said, there's nothing on the horizon. So you've got the summertime, you can look at some different spots, maybe make some different arrangements with the Portuguese Club, whatever needs to be done, and then come back, you know, whenever you think is reasonable, to this board, and let us know what your findings are.
Yeah, and, you know, one suggestion with that is, why don't we get some internal reviews and suggestions, look at the challenges that we've talked about locally, run them through the police department, because there may be some specific challenges that you've mentioned in the past. I know the chief has helped us iron out a few, as Brian had mentioned. And then, then why don't we meet, why don't we do that? And I'd be happy to.
So you want to do that? Okay, all right, so if we can...
Why don't we get some drafts?
All right, so if we can indicate that I've appointed Bill to work along with the town clerk and any other folks that you want to get involved with this, and report back to us as to, you know, possible change in location, or not.
Yeah, we can, yeah, exactly, we can target mid-August or so.
I don't want to put a burden on you that you have to come back with something different, I mean, but just relook at it and see what's out there.
Okay.
Is that okay?
That's fine.
Okay, all right. Anything else?
No, I promised I wouldn't have a lot of questions for you.
Okay, all right, okay. Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
Before I go on to the next item, I'd like to jump out of place here, because I asked the police chief and the fire chief to come down and just give us kind of a little update of this early Christmas present that we have on Congress Street.
Two, actually.
Two of them, yes, double, double fun, you know, where they, where they came from, and what are we gonna do with these things?
The tanks were moved from Fall River, they're owned by the railroad.
So we're talking about two very large tanks, in case anyone didn't get a chance to go downtown?
They're 120 feet in length, they're 11 feet diameter, and they run, well, they say 130,000 pounds. The truck team for the state police, so they do truck enforcement, they say add another 50,000.
Really?
Yeah.
It's the margin of safety?
Yeah, they're not buying it, so anyway...
180,000 pounds?
Yeah, so, in moving them, they moved them over a 24-hour period from Fall River up to Taunton, and then this was the second leg. They developed the travel path, it was done by an engineering firm, and then it was reviewed by Mass DOT, they issued the permits. We had no input, we received an email, actually, it was the highway department, on Wednesday. I saw it late Wednesday, communicating with the fire chief, Bill Tui, when we, because I didn't even receive the route. Bill, on his, because it was forwarded, forwarded type of email, so I lost the map, I was double-forward. In any event, Bill laid out the route, and the route for Milford was 495 to 109, 109 to 16, take a left onto North Bow, come across Central Street to South Bow, cross the park, take a right onto Congress.
I'm surprised it made it as far as it did.
Well, it was the left on West Street, because West Street is a bit of an angle there.
Yeah, yeah.
So first, they were concerned about the, the way the trailer works, all of the wheels are independent, they all turn, so the driver controls each set of wheels, all 36 of them. And he just refused to make that turn. He, even if I took the traffic light out, so, you know, bring in the electrician, take the traffic, at their expense, just the lip where the traffic light sits on the base, those two inches were two inches too many for him, because he doesn't want to roll the thing. So, my phone rang, and I had one stuck on Congress Street and one stuck on Park, and had to make a decision. There's, you cannot change the route, you have to, Mass DOT issues the permit, that is the route, unless they decide otherwise. They weren't available on Sunday, they were busy, we weren't. So, we ended up, I had a choice of two. Turn around and go back the exact same route, so back out of Park, onto Main, shut Main down for literally two hours, go back down South Bow the wrong way. It's amazing they made it up the right way, so.
It is amazing, it's amazing to me.
Second alternative was park these things. I said, well, that one's parked, so I just have to back this one up, and... So we waited till church services were over, because there were cars parked there, and believing that many of the people may be in the church. They wanted to interrupt church services, I wasn't willing to do that, so we waited. And one vehicle did move, then we found the other three vehicles, we talked to the folks at the post office, they were doing Sunday deliveries, you know, overnight mail, and they couldn't get them, they could be anywhere. So I made the decision, for public safety reasons, to move three vehicles that were postal workers from the street into the postal parking lot, at their expense. Odds towing came up and moved the three cars.
At whose expense, chief?
At the expense of the hauler.
Okay, not the, not the vehicle owner?
No, Bay Crane, Bay Crane's paying. And then, to deal with the issue of attractive nuisance, we put a police officer there from that moment, to this point. So, working with them today, we're going to move the tanks tonight at midnight. First thing that has to be done, the reason they couldn't go up Route 16, because they didn't want to do what they call a bridge over, we have the culvert right near Green Street. So the decision now, Mass DOT, we're gonna do a bridge over, so the tankers can, that culvert is rated 57,000 pounds, you know, so if you don't do a bridge over, you're gonna... So midnight, they'll start to move, there's gonna be two of our cruisers and two Hope Dale cruisers as escort vehicles. We will shut down Route 16 at Green Street and 140 for a half hour to put the bridge over in. Then we'll reroute the traffic around 140 to Green Street. At the point where they're moving, once they get past Water Street, we're gonna send westbound traffic up South Main till they get past Water Street, then we'll send them up Water Street to 140, and likewise in the other direction once they're on the move, because the only vehicles that can come up by them would be emergency vehicles, ambulances. But we, working with the deputy fire chief, with Mark Nelson, we've notified all the fire departments, ambulance crews, police agencies that may be going to the hospital, and gave them your best routes, depending upon, you know, from Franklin, for instance, Bellingham, their best route is to jump off on the South Main, come Water Street, and go to 140. So, the move, we anticipate, they're saying, will take three hours, but based on my experience, I'll probably be out there tomorrow morning, checking things out, so. That's where we are at this point.
And just so folks know, there's nothing in these tanks right now, is there?
No product in the tanks.
No, there's no product at all. You know, they, they're headed to the railroad yard in Hope Dale, and then they're gonna, by rail, take them to Grafton, where they're gonna have this propane, you know, depot. This is two of four, so there's two more coming next weekend, you know. So they move them Saturday and Sunday, it takes...
Maybe they get to pick a different route next weekend.
The route they're gonna go at this point, they get it, is, it would be, we suggested, let me step back, at the point where somebody, you know, sent us information, we suggested that they actually come off 495 in Bellingham and come up 140.
Sure.
You don't have the structures, you don't have, you know, so, that's one route that they'll likely take a look at. The other route is, you come 109 and you go 16 straight up, and you do the bridge over. So, do the bridge over during the early morning hours, so it's there, it's basic plating, so vehicles can drive over it. And then, from there, they just come along, do their thing. We shut down that one section of Route 16 for a half hour to take it back out, all the metal structures, so, that's where it is.
And Mark, your department, your personnel was involved to any degree?
Involved as far as just planning to get around the obstruction.
Well, just once it hit town, because, I mean, did we know that they were empty?
Yes, yes.
You were told.
Right, no, we knew there was no product. We just knew that it would be slow-going through Main Street. And I'm amazed they negotiated the turn onto North Bow.
Sure.
Because I watched it.
Oh, really?
So it was, that was something, but I said, I don't know how far they're gonna get.
Yeah, and fortunately, nothing, no property was damaged that we know of, no...
We had no issues.
Okay.
You know, the interesting thing is, they found that, once they were stuck, they then drove in vehicles the rest of the route, and they found that had they even made it up West Street to Freedom Street, when they got to the end of Freedom Street, they couldn't negotiate the turn, so.
No, I wouldn't think so.
I just, the pre-planning, the planning was done on paper without input from the local communities. I, you know, in speaking with Mass DOT, I suggested to them that it'd be wise to pick up the phone and involve people, because, you know, we have a pretty good feel of turning radiuses and the rest of it.
You know which lights get damaged with regular tractor, trailer trucks, right?
That's exactly, I said to them, I said, that light, I lose that one on Route 85 on a regular basis.
Well, they probably relied upon the recommendations of the engineers, who I assume were hired either, I don't know if this propane company is affiliated with the railroad or what the deal is, but I'm sure they relied upon the engineers.
It was Bay State Engineering, so it was the railroad that hired them.
Okay.
And they communicated with the engineers at the crane company who are doing the hauling. I've had dealings with those engineers, and, you know, they've been very cooperative.
Sure, sure. All right, let me try, Bill, any questions or comments?
No, no, I was in contact with the chief during the escapade, happened to see it as I came into town hall right here, so, yeah, just wondering how they were gonna make it, but figuring the engineers from DOT were smarter than me, I just assumed that they had picked the right route. So, got a bridge over tonight, looks like we're gonna get them out of our way, get them into Hope Dale. Any chance they're gonna route by Brian's building, I was just curious?
That was actually, one of the second routes was to send them, it was to send them down South Main, down 140 the wrong way.
I'm still working the insurance claim from the last hit. Yeah, good, well, I...
With your luck, Brian, with that corner, would have rolled.
Yeah, it would have rolled, yeah, yeah, I appreciate the new route. Will?
I have one, I have one question. They're getting to Hope Dale, going on the rail, going to Grafton to, I remember all the neighbors there trying to fight that propane filling station. Once they get filled there?
Yes.
And what happens when they're filled? Are they coming back through Milford?
No.
Or they stay there?
They're creating, it's basically a propane depot, so...
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that...
That's a facility that is going to be in Grafton, that the railroad owns, so they're gonna put these things in place, and...
That's what I figured, but I'd rather people hear it directly from you guys.
Stationary tank farm.
Okay, great.
So it's about 320,000 gallons of propane.
And it is propane, chief, it's not liquefied natural gas?
No, it's propane.
Wow, okay.
320,000 gallons, it's a lot, plus or minus, yeah.
Well, thank you for coming here, Tom and Mark, I mean, it was such a, you know, significant event in the community, and I know a lot of people had a lot of questions, that I asked Rick to have you come and just kind of give us an update so that folks could see, you know, what's real and what isn't, and I...
That brings reality to the elephant in the room when you drive down Main Street.
Unquestionably, yeah, unquestionably. So thank you, and good job, and thanks for keeping us posted on it yesterday as it happened.
So we'll be working on it tonight.
Okay, good luck.
Thanks for your coordination with ambulance services, we know we've got the hospital there, we know you guys think of this, and it just reinforced...
We know you guys think of this and it just reinforces that you're thinking about these things every day, so, thank you.
Good, thank you.
Have a good night.
All right, let's get back on track and the next item that we have is an application for alteration of premises. Fun Zone Milford LLC, DBA pins. It's a petition for a change of the license to accommodate an alteration of premises. Reading from the Town Department report, the building commissioner indicates that it's an allowable use in the CC zone, building and restrooms are accessible, the occupant load is eight hundred. The town planner indicates that the site plan was approved by the planning board on May 5th. The tax collector indicates there are no outstanding taxes. The town treasurer has no issues, nor does the fire chief or the police chief. And the Board of Health has indicated that we are looking at an outdoor deck with a bar sink that has been okayed by them. So, with that, we have David Breen, the owner of Fun Zone, along with attorney Joe Antonellis. So, why don't I turn it over to you gentlemen and.
Evening.
I don't know what the story is.
Thank you for the opportunity. As you know, David's been the owner and manager of Fun Zone Pins for quite some years and the business has been very, very successful. This is an opportunity for David to provide an additional service for his patrons, which would be some outside dining, which is rare in our community. This will be a significant expense for David. He's going to have an alteration to the building. In essence, what he's gonna do is put in what we would just literally call an overhead door. Obviously, it's not gonna be garage door looking, but it's gonna provide an opportunity for David to open up to this patio. Of importance, I believe, is the fact that the patio will not be accessible from the parking lot. There will be an emergency exit off of the patio, but all of the patrons and anyone using the facility will have to come inside first. And that's, that's designed on purpose to be able to have better control of, of the clientele, to know what's going on, who's seating where, where, how many people are at, at, at certain tables. So, David has designed it so that the deck area, which will be new, which will seat about forty-eight patrons, will only be, have an egress from it and not access from the parking lot. Again, everything will come in through. He's going to install what he's called a veranda bar, so it'll be a bar that is actually inside of pins. And will have about twelve seats on the inside face so that he can use it at all seasons and then have five additional bar seats along with the forty-eight ta- uh, seats and tables on the deck. When the weather is inclement, he will be obviously able to close the door and still have a, a separate bar area within the facility to provide better service for his patrons, also to provide an additional area for people to have private functions. I think you know he already has a couple of function rooms in there, but this provides a third opportunity. I, in, in talking to David, I know that he has a excellent reputation in the community and that his license is free and clear of any violations, et cetera. So, we feel comfortable in making the presentation tonight. I think we've properly reported all the financial information that's necessary for the, for the ABCC to look at and provided a site plan fro- from a stamped engineer.
Joe, before I turn it over to the board, just a couple of quick questions. The, and I, I take a look at, this is what I have in front of me. The, the, the plan itself, so the deck, it's gonna be ground level?
Correct.
It's not gonna be raised or anything?
It's gonna be just the two steps, I believe.
Well, it's, it's gonna be raised to, it's gonna be ground level from within the building, so as it comes out of the building, there may be eighteen or twenty inches.
Oh, but I mean, it's not on a roof of any type of vestibule going inside or anything?
I think it's just two steps down, when I checked with the engineer off the platform onto the parking lot.
But to access the deck from the building, it's ground level throughout.
Okay. And it looks like it's going to be located where, at or near your front, your front door in that general vicinity?
Good point, it's in the front of the building, in the parking lot area, right in between the two doors.
Correct.
Yeah, okay, so it'll be facing out to the parking area, not in the back where residents are and all that sort of thing.
Away from the residents.
Okay, yeah, let me turn it over, Bill?
You know, this makes sense to me when I think of the winter we just went through and the opportunity for business and frankly, you know, clients, you know, customers to be able to seat outside when they can. I know I want to spend as much time outside as I can, you know, given the winter we just went through. It makes sense, it makes sense from a, I know the clientele you're looking at attracting in some cases is that business clientele, but I see it working with, you know, general residents and community members, so, makes sense. And it looks like all the right things have been thought of, so, like I say, I don't have any questions.
Okay, but Will?
No, I don't have any questions either. Looks like it'll be a good place to sit and relax, I look forward to it.
Do you need any propane tanks?
No, I, I thought they were, I actually thought they were two nuclear submarines when I saw them. The smart, I went to get my coffee and that's the first thing I saw, Ray and Dix.
Well, you know, we add dredging Milford pond, Joe.
Right, well, I know that, right.
That's also a no smoking section, you can't be over there.
Okay.
And, and always to the board, whenever I file an application in the town of Milford, I get an awful lot of help from your staff, from Rick's office and from, from Gene, and I, I always want to make the point of that because again, I practice in other towns where you don't get any help at all and it's always nice to come in and get that, thank you.
Joe, just from my perspective, Mr. Chairman, if I might.
Yeah.
One of the things we obviously do is we review, you know, license status and we, we know as board members that this doesn't come easy, maintaining a business like this is tremendous challenges and, you know, personally, I want to say I recognize that the Breen's have worked hard to maintain a good establishment and, you know, if it looks easy sometimes, it's in part because of the counsel that's provided and in part because of the business and what it's done over the past few years, so, you know, hopefully that's an acknowledgement, you take that positive.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate your comments on the staff, Joe. I, I know, obviously, because I have occasion to do things in other communities and it's just different. And sometimes we do take for granted what we have here in Milford, but I know everybody that works in, in the selectmen's office and the other offices that you have to come in contact with do everything they can do to try to make it a little bit easier for the business to be successful, so. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to approve this alteration, or application for alteration of premises as is.
Motion made, sir, a second.
Just a second.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Thank you, we appreciate it, thank you. Welcome to the board, folks.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Good luck.
Thank you.
With that, the next item that we have is the Portuguese club seeking permit for the annual picnic. The following dates, Saturday, July 18th and Sunday, July 19th. With that, we have the police chief, we have representatives from the club and, Tom, you've been through this before, so why don't I turn it over to the old pro?
It, you mentioned the dates and, and as we've discussed in the past, the, the same provisions are within the license itself. As far as service of drinks, they cannot serve more than two. We're going to use the bracelets as we've used in the past several years. The same number of police officers on detail will be there along with me to make sure things go well. The hours of entertainment are as they've always been in the time that I've been here in Milford. And so, the provisions of, of the requirements are all spelled out in the same fashion on how things will be done and the hours as far as closing. As you know, we do monitor the sound levels because sound, we know, you know, travels across the community and, and that's been a concern in the past, but just so the board's aware that it's on our radar screen and, and we do go out and check in the different neighborhoods to see, you know, what our experience is, what we're hearing and then go back and working with Joe, adjust that sound. So, you know, the offices of the club have always been cooperative, there's a requirement within the license that they be on premises during the hours and be available to, excuse me, to, to us. We do have communication via cell phone, we know each other's numbers and they're all programmed from working over the years. So, you have before you the license as far as the alcohol out in the event itself, it speaks about the hours within the club itself and who can access in the hours, people can access the club, the entertainment license and what else do you have? You have the parade and then the banners.
Yeah.
So, a- as we've done in the past, but there will be two supervisors, ten police officers there during the evening hours, one officer during the daytime hours, just to maintain things. We work very closely with the fire department, as you know, and they tend to assign a couple of the firefighter EMTs that stay in the area and take calls from there, but assist us. Then lastly, I've communicated with the state police in past several years, they've provided us troopers as assistants in dealing with the general neighborhood, so along Route 140 up in the parking lot areas to make sure that things are orderly and people aren't up to, you know, mischief. So, likewise, we assign our own patrol officers to work with them. So, it's, at this point, from our, you know, perspective and our planning, we're pretty much right on target.
Yeah, no, I mean, the permit that, or I should say, the license application with the requirements that you drew up several years ago with the representatives of the club have worked very well over the years and it's just such a great event, it's so distinctly Milford. I, I don't think that any of us could imagine the Portuguese picnic not occurring and I think you do a great job keeping everything together considering the large number of people that come, particularly from outside of the area. So, you know, it's a tremendous crowd event, it's not easy to maintain that, things happen and I think your department and the offices of the club have dealt with it very, very effectively over the years. I see you made an adjustment on the music, it's stopping Saturday evening at 12:15 and Sunday at 10:45 PM. So, you know, to me, I, I always love hearing the music from my backyard, you know, I think it sounds great.
They tend to play the longest song, the last two minutes, so.
Yeah.
Goes an extra ten or fifteen.
Grab that, yeah, oh, that's all right. So, with that, let me turn it over to the board, Bill?
No, I know this group and I know each of you and see each of you at different times to be out in the community, work hard to make sure this is a safe event. The board has its responsibilities, the chief has his responsibilities. I, I know the biggest challenge has always been throughout the years, the people that bring, bring alcohol into the event. And I know that the police department works, works very hard to make sure outside parking lots and other areas around are not convenient places for people to liquor up and then participate because it's a, it's a great cultural event. Beyond the music, the food and the experience of the dance are great opportunities for, to carry on traditions that's been brought from Portugal here and it's important, I know, to the community and it's important for people who are not Portuguese to get an opportunity once a year to, to see this. So, I know, I appreciate it and I know the community appreciates it. Chief, I'll say the same thing I always have in that the only, the only time I've really received complaints, other than some minor incidents, you know, associated outside of the event, is, is the music level. So, I'd ask you, you know, to use your judgment to, you know, tone it down as, as a night, as a night goes on, to, to work to keep that at a moderate level so that the people there can hear it and participate, but yet thirty blocks away, people don't necessarily need to have it come in their room. And I know you work hard at it, so it's, it's one of the things to be sensitive of, I didn't want to let it go by, but great event and I look forward to it. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Will?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have any questions either, I've experienced it many times over the years and I'll be there again partaking in the parade, so Joe probably sick of me all the time going to visit him. You know, good luck and I'll see you all there.
Okay, so we have three items that we need to act on, the one-day all-alcoholic license, the live entertainment license and then also the parade permit. I'll entertain them all in one motion if you'd like.
Are you doing the banners across Main Street now?
No.
Okay.
Just put them on a separate. Or if you want to make separate ones, whatever's easier.
Yeah, why don't we, why don't I go ahead and make a motion to approve and all, I'm gonna do it one at a time, all day, uh, one-day all-alcoholic license?
I'll second that.
Is it stipulated within the, the application?
Yeah, no, I know what the, I guess it's a misnomer to call it the one day.
I know.
You're talking two days. I understand, yeah. In, in accordance with the application.
Two, one day.
July 18th, July 19th. Motion made and seconded, any more discussion? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Next, I'd like to make a motion to approve the live entertainment permit.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the live entertainment permit pursuant to the license application before us. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
And lastly, I'd like to make a motion to approve the parade permit.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the Sunday parade, July 19th, 2015, as presented. All those in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck, guys.
Thanks.
That concludes the.
Another safe one, that's what we want.
Yeah, Tom, thank you, good luck tonight. That concludes the scheduled appointments. The next item that we have is the town administrator's report.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm happy to report that we have a local project in the House budget. I received word from both Representative Fernandez and Senator Fatman that they have earmarked fifty thousand dollars to be included in their budget to benefit the Milford Youth Center. I want to thank each of them and their staffs for their efforts in assisting Milford again in this manner. An update on the Town Hall gutter and snow guard project, we did have a pre-construction meeting on June 11th with Cape Way Roofing, who will be doing the work on the project. President was Town Engineer Avoni Reese, Maintenance Supervisor Carlos Benjamin, Rich Gorham from Russo Barr, our design architect and myself. We anticipate the work on the project beginning on Monday, July 6th. The work includes the installation of lead copper gutters, downspouts, roof edge aprons, valleys, free flashing around the tower base, snow guards and snow melt systems over the entrances at Town Hall. The project is anticipated, weather permitting, to be completed by the middle of August. And an update on the Louisa Lake Dam repairs, I have been informed by Town Engineer Avoni Reese that the deadline for the town to complete and submit the Phase II inspection report to the Office of Dam Safety is August 1st, 2015. The deadline to bring the dam into compliance and complete repair work is September 1st, 2016. We do anticipate, anticipate, excuse me, meeting these dates. And that's all I have today, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Bill?
Now, you answered the question that I would've had, how does it look for us meeting the deadlines of, of state?
Yeah, there should be no more extensions because I think, as you know, we are working on one extension right now.
Yes.
Yeah.
No, no questions?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Please send a letter of, a formal letter of thanks to Senator Fatman and Representative Fernandez for the fifty thousand dollars for the youth center. It's definitely needed considering all of the different things that are, a- 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 all the balls in play right now with, with that, you know, department. Okay, moving on to old business, first thing that we have on is discussion for the IT department. So, as we all know, our most recent, let me go to my IT file here, which is getting increasingly large, our, our most recent IT director resigned and at this point, we're trying to determine a little bit of direction going forward, both from the town's perspective and I think from the school's perspective. So, Rick, why don't you just kind of lead us off a little bit as to maybe what's been done recently on the municipal end and where you sort of envision moving forward?
On the municipal end, as far as Town Hall and town buildings, I believe we are in good shape. We do have some items that we do want to do at Town Hall, such as increasing bandwidth, server upgrades, which we will do, and the like. There was money put in the budget, as you gentlemen know, for that. Right now, Worldband is our consultant, they have been working with us from the outset since pretty much I've been on, on the scene. They are directing the IT department on at least the short-term basis. They are directing the personnel as far as the ticket system, as far as the ticket system on both the school side and the town side. We are. We are in very good shape there, tickets are being handled accordingly, we have not had any issues there. On the school side, while not to speak for the superintendent, as we all know, a assessment was done by Wally Computer. I have Worldband reviewing that, Bob and I do. Bob has put together what he perceives are the technology needs for the school system, that is, where he wants to be with his educational plan and technology. The issue now, obviously, is what do we need to do so that he can implement that plan? In addition to that, obviously, if we are going to do that, we must need, must make sure that it will work in conjunction with our needs for the town. So that's where we are now. There has been a request, as you know, by the school committee for a joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen. That request was reiterated today to me. Also, I think there has been some discussion by this board as to, for lack of a better word, augmenting the task force to include members from other committees, such as FinCom, school committee, and this board, to take steps to go forward. So on a short-term basis, I think we are, we are good, but obviously, we need to move forward.
Okay, so would it be your intention to try to go forward to seek another director at this point, or would you be looking for some different direction from this board?
At this point, I think I would like to hear what the board might want to say, what the school committee might want to say, to see if that is the proper way to proceed. Personally, I believe a director and personnel are the way to go. I also think we need to be careful, especially with the amount of work we need to do on the school side, that I think we're going to need consultant-type work to help us implement the infrastructure. So that would be my opinion at this point.
All right, and I put it on this agenda, I put it on the agenda at this time, because it is a key moment, the director has left, so it's an opportunity to maybe shape the department and get a little bit more of a consensus going forward as to, you know, what we want this IT department to look like. And, you know, of course, the problem is, it's the way the description is now, it talks about sort of joint servitude between the municipality and the school system, but the school system has their own governance, their own constraints, needs, funding, and it's very difficult to tie the municipal end up with something like that if we don't have that same level of jurisdiction over a very key part of the job. So, you know, personally, at this point, you know, I think it's premature to think about meeting with the school committee, at least until we kind of get a sense as to a board, as to what we might think is important, not important. At that point, maybe it's okay to meet with the school committee, maybe it's not, but I want to make sure that this board at least has a clear consensus of what we think is important for the framework of a department. So with that, I'll kind of toss it out to both of you and see where we can go with that. Bill?
And so, as you know, Mr. Chairman, this has been, you know, high on my radar screen, because, you know, obviously, when we looked at the Worldband report, we understood that the bulk of the school system side especially had gone through a period of neglect, and as a result, critical systems remained band-aided, but not necessarily really addressed. So, you know, that was, that's always been a concern, because the interconnectivity between systems, between Town Hall, school department as an example, were always a concern of me, of mine, and, you know, people will still look to Town Hall when they look at, when they think of IT payroll services, HR services, they'll always look to Town Hall. I thought it was a great idea, at the time, to combine the roles, it's one opportunity for cost savings, but it's also an opportunity to make sure that interoperability isn't coming from two separate fiefdoms, and that connections can be established with the help of consultants when we bring on what I would call enterprise-wide solutions, right? You know, having said that, you know, as a Board of Selectmen, as a member of the Board of Selectmen, I'm not sure what more we can do, and I'll explain my thought process. There have been both the town administrator and the superintendent of schools who have gotten everything they've asked for. In the screening process, candidates that were brought before this board were hired and appointed at the recommendation of both of those individuals. We were not part of that screening process, but we gave them what they were looking for, so there were no, that we can claim political appointments or otherwise. With regard to salary, we recommended even higher salary, but at the same time, that individual came in with an opportunity to make $93,000, put at the highest end of the salary available from the Personnel Board discussion that Rick had. The only thing I can conclude, and this is anecdotal information, is that, and it's discussions with Superintendent Trembley, it's many, many discussions with Rick, is that, you know, something's radically flawed when we're looking at three people in four years taking this role, and have not been successful. So either it's something in our screening process, and I don't mean to be master of the obvious, I just want to highlight where the opportunities are going to lie. It's either something in our screening process, or something in our management system that prevents an individual from being successful. Either the individual's skills that are not drawn out through the screening process, or the management of the individual's not managing to make somebody successful. What I'd like to hear from the people who've made the recommendations, and the people that manage this work day-to-day, is what are they recommending, and what would be different in any future go-around, in any management or organization, that would make this process successful? I'm not pleased that we're where we are, and frankly, I'm not entirely pleased with some of the things that I've heard from the school department undermining the role of the director of IT. I don't think that helped, but at the same time, we need to manage this person to success. So what I'd like to hear from superintendent and school committee, if they want to weigh in on it, is how this person is going to be managed differently, how the school department is going to participate in a way that's constructive, and if it's not meant to be, it's not meant to be, I'm just happy doing that, cutting that tie. But first, what I'd like to hear is what's being recommended by the two people who have the greatest needs? Because I've not heard anything as it related to library, I've not heard anything as it related to highway, I've not heard anything as it relates to, within the Town Hall, how we're going to bring on GIS, which is going to put an additional burden. I've not heard anything as it relates to FinCom, additional individual devices in the tablets, and the need to restrict that simply because of concerns related to number of users in that. I also have great concern about the extent to which our IT system is vulnerable externally and internally. If we're not managing who has access to our system, and what form our employees have access, and this was raised at the last meeting, I have grave concern about our external outgoing placement process, or exit process for employees who retire. I have the same concerns, not only with, relates to IT, but as it relates to general, you know, telephones, key card access, physical keys, all of that. Because if people are still using email accounts and have access with passwords, years after they've left, our intrusion prevention system leaves a lot to be desired. So hopefully, those audits are ongoing, I heard that raised at the last meeting, I had an opportunity to watch that. But I'm interested to hear what the town administrator and the superintendent have to say in terms of how they can manage this differently, or how this should be constructed and organized differently to make this person successful.
Okay, let me just, before I get to Will, let me just kind of break that down a little bit, because there's definitely a broad brush stroke in terms of the overall department, but then you're also focusing on some specific itemized, smaller detail items that are maybe occurring. And also to preface, one of the things that we did at last meeting is, we requested really just a basic report from the superintendent, where the school department is and where they're going. So I think that's something that we need to get. But let me just go to Rick before I go to Will, because do you, can you address the items that Bill talked about in terms of employees and users and that sort of thing?
Yes, I can.
Because I know that that was brought up at the last time.
Yes.
And I consider that something separate than a broad.
I agree.
Look at the department.
I agree, but, you know, I want to, I thought it was great that the issues were raised, because that's the place we want IT professionals thinking about, right? We have, and I've brought it up in the past, we have a great deal of very sensitive personal information for each of the town employees, we have transaction routing information for many of the residents as they pay with credit card, so there's a great deal of information that the town has, and as with any corporation, there's ways and methods to protect that, I want people focused on those types of things, because that's where it all begins.
Yeah, I understand, right, right. So, Rick, do you have anything on that specific point?
Yeah, I think, I believe it was Will who asked for a couple of things. As far as the school side, that still is being done due to the volume. I can speak towards the town.
What, I'm sorry, what's being done?
As far as, a couple of things, one, usernames and emails that we talked about. From the town side, any and all prior employees have been removed in what they call a disabled grouping. As my understanding, we keep them in case we need access for our own purposes, or Freedom of Information Act purposes. When an employee leaves, access is shut off, passwords are changed, access to the building is terminated. So, again, I can only speak at this time, I had one of our technicians go through, and along with Worldband, and so from that standpoint, I feel comfortable in that we are doing what we need to do.
Are you talking Town Hall employees?
Town Hall employees right now, yes.
So would that also apply to library, who have the same access, or highway, I'm just trying to think broader?
Yes, yeah.
When we talk about town.
In absence of the schools, and other than the schools, correct.
So the exit process for those are as sharp and as robust as they would be in Town Hall?
Yes, and, you know, just when Paul left, for example, that's what we did, shut off the email, shut off the password access, we returned keys, we returned access cards, things of that nature. I think the other thing that was brought up was the issue of domains, and whether or not they are under our control. All domains are under town control. That was also looked into by both Worldband and, again, one of our technicians. Also, I think the third thing I think that was asked was closets, the security. We are looking, again, on the school side, I don't have the information on the Town Hall side, I'm very comfortable that they are secured. We are looking, though, into the other buildings, for example, that you just mentioned, highway, Town Hall, excuse me, library, and senior center, for example. I think some of those we may have to look into more closely. So Superintendent Trembley did inform me that the report that was requested by this board, he is in the process of completing it, he just was not able to get it to us tonight. So he will get that to both his school committee and to the selectmen. So that is in progress. Once he has the list of usernames and emails from, again, our technician and Worldband, they will be reviewed accordingly to see what the status of access, whether it's there or not there, for prior teachers, employees of the school system. So, those are, those are things that are in progress.
Anything else before I go to Will?
No, no.
Okay, Will?
Yeah, a few things. I think whether we have a, whether we have a sit-down with the Board of Selectmen and the school committee, and I think that obviously has to be thought about. One, they're requesting it, so, as did we a couple of weeks ago, so my gut tells me initially that, of course, that's a no-brainer, we should at least have a conversation. Of course, by the time you talk to seven school committee members with three Board of Selectmen, the town administrator, the superintendent, his two assistants, I mean, all of a sudden, there's a dozen and a half people sitting around a table, and things often get more difficult, and, you know, you're trying to decide something by committee. But I do think we need to know explicitly what they want. I think that a person coming in, if we go to the point of having a single director again, which I'm not sure that's the way to go, but if we do that, this is going to be another person that has two bosses, two fiefdoms, two boards that their bosses report to. That's a lot to ask any individual, and I think that's why we're sitting here for now, looking for the fourth person, if that's the way it's going to go. So that leaves me a little concerned. I think when we get to the point of even emails that were coming, and conversations that were happening on the back end, you know, whether it was the last gentleman who left, or two folks ago, I mean, everyone's kind of making it about them, and this isn't about them. This is about all of our employees, all of our students, making sure payrolls met, making sure that the finance committee can get, you know, 15 tablets, which is what they've been asking for for three years now. We're not there, and I think we just have to figure out, and I know, you know, this isn't, again, you know, we're all on the same page when it comes to, we need to find out what we need prior to what direction we can go into. And I don't know how that necessarily gets done, because, and again, I'm coming on board to this, and you two gentlemen have been dealing with this for a while, I actually, I probably can't remotely be as frustrated as you two are, or as the, and I certainly don't want to speak for you, or school committee members are, or the superintendent, or the town administrator. But I think if we're going to go after somewhat of the same model that we've had in the past, I'm not sure what we have to do completely different, but we can't go at it again and have a fourth failure. If going out and having Worldband is here, if using them for projects, if, you know, and having our techs do the day-to-day stuff, that maybe that's, maybe that's the way to go. But I think it's very difficult, and I think a lot of the bottom line is that one person reporting to two different people, I think it might just be that simple, that that's a problem. I think that even if there is one centralized IT director, then we need to build the department and give it to that person. This person should be hired as an IT director, told to build the department, have a vision, have a plan, do all this, and, by the way, do all your daily stuff that you're supposed to do while you're building this department. It's a lot to ask a single individual. I think that, and this is something I said to the superintendent in the conversation when he reached out to me, was where's the org chart that is given, that was given to the IT director? And that, and I'm not saying there wasn't one, there may have been one. With the school employees, with the town employees, where they fit, and he admitted saying that that probably wasn't the case, when we have a teacher, who's a classroom teacher, but also in charge of tech teams, and going in the back end, and doing what, again, nothing wrong, doing what he's always supposed, always been doing. But how does that fit in with an IT director? Who's supposed to be the head of a department? So I think, again, the department needs to be built, it needs to be given to whoever is coming in and charged with this, if, whether or not we're going to try for a single centralized individual again, or if we're going to contract with Worldband and say, here, here are the people, whether it's a hybrid, whether it's outsourced, whatever it is, I think there just needs to be some clear direction. I honestly don't think we can hire someone and tell them, again, have a vision, build us an IT department, and do it all, because we're going to fail again.
You know, the problem that I see is that, you know, when I look at these two reports from Worldband, one focusing on uh, one focusing on the municipal end and one focusing on the school end, and I, and I think they're very good in the sense that they break it down in clear language so that I can, uh, partially understand it anyway. Um, you know, it seems as though we're, we're, we're trying to cure the ills of the schools that, that have, have accumulated over the years. And that's beyond our ability, it's beyond our jurisdiction, and it's really not something that we ought to be doing. You know, when we look at the town one, you know, we look at the town, uh, report from Worldband, you know, this is, th- this is manageable, this is easy. This is, this is what we're used to doing. This is putting together a capital plan. You know, it might not be technology, say it's, uh, roads or, you know, vehicles or anything. I mean, we've, we've done that. These are the items. You know, we prioritize them, uh, we submit them on to the capital improvement or the finance committee. We go forward and they get phased in at the various levels. The problem is that, you know, this board, this, this office is, is trying to take on the responsibilities of the school department, and we would not do that in any other area. We wouldn't be doing it with textbooks, we wouldn't be doing it with, uh, uh, facilities, but for some reason, because of the way this position was originally cast a number of years ago, we seem to be trying to take on the problems of, of the school department. We don't know the school problems as, as, as well as the school committee, the administration does or should. And, you know, they should certainly be able to establish their own capital plan and, and go forward on that. So wh- what I'm hearing, I, I guess broadly from, from both of you sort of, and I think it's, it's what I'm looking forward to, and Bill, you might have said it the best, you're looking from some direction from the two people who've been involved most, the town administrator and the superintendent. So in terms of trying to facilitate this, this process, um, you know, maybe it's wise to ask for a joint recommendation from them to see what they foresee going forward as a proposal. And then that's something that we can, um, address, play off of, uh, tweak, uh, uh, whatever you want.
Well, that would be my, that would be my caution to both the town administrator, Rick, and, uh, the superintendent. If I'm, if I'm given a plan today that, uh, doesn't instill in, in me confidence, that I'm prepared to make recommendations that are possibly way outside of, uh, anything that's being proposed there because, frankly, we're, we're where we are today, um, in part because the way it's been managed. And an inability for the town and the school department to get together and effectively coordinate the activities and resources. I'm, I'm hoping that folks are introspective enough and can go have, uh, very honest and direct and, uh, dialogue so that they can work out whatever that is. And by the way, I, you know, I, I think it's a good thing in this regard that we're having the discussion. As a taxpayer, I'd expect boards and committees not to worry about artificial boundaries or boundaries, uh, that might otherwise preclude cooperation, collaboration, uh, effective buying power. Whether it's, you know, it's, there's no reason why the library's got to buy this phone service, the highway's got to buy this phone service. Police, these, this is all IT, this is all interoperability. Uh, there's no reason why we can't leverage the buying power of a ninety million dollar corporation, which is what the community is, to make sure that, uh, needs and, uh, maybe manufacturers, the, the most common configurations for either laptop or desktop systems can't be, can't be bought cooperatively. So I think, I think the idea is good. By the way, I, I, I'm, I'm not, I'm not opposed to, to divorcing that model, um, if it's not effective. I don't want to continually turn to people who make commitments, have their family move here, buy houses here, uh, only to be frustrated and leave.
But I think, and I just want to stop you.
Yeah.
And I think that's, you know, what you're talking about is really the second step of the process, I think. You know, the cooperative purchasing, that sort of thing, all of that makes great sense. But someone's got to put on paper what we're going to be purchasing. Someone's got to put forth, someone's got to put forth the, the items. And, and I, and I think obviously, you know, this board, uh, you know, can handle it on municipal end and the school department can handle on, on the, uh, on the school end. That, that's the kind of plan I think that needs to be put forward. Then I think what you're talking about in terms of managing that IT department properly gets into the cost sharing and that type of stuff.
Well, you know, what I worry is that, uh, and part of my concern has been, um, that i- i- if operated in independent silos and fiefdoms, that, that the way those plans are established and, and thought of are, are so separate that there isn't any opportunity down the road to leverage, uh, because you can spec yourself into a, into a system that's very proprietary, right? And it won't look anything like the town because they weren't, they weren't created in the same room at the same time and thought of.
So that's going to be the role of your IT director.
Right, it's, it's to create that.
Okay, selectmen, you're asking for brand X, school committee, you're asking for brand Y, you know, if we can all go to brand Z, it's going to be something different. So, so tha- tha- that's the coordination at the level you're talking about, right?
No, I'm actually talking about the development of plans. I, I would expect, I would expect from an IT director, for you as an example, to be able to go to an IT director and say, look, I need this functionality, I need this user, uh, uh, ability. Uh, I may not know all of the software and frankly, I don't care if it's on the cloud or native. I need it to work, I need it to function, I need access, I need access from home. And I need to be able to use this. All I want to be able, all I want department heads, wherever they may lie, is to be able to describe the functionality and what they needed to do and have the rest be seamless to them. But if the school develops their own capital plan and the town develops their own capital plan without any connection and without any joint meetings, without any, uh, thought, we may lose opportunity. It may be more costly in the end, and that's what my concern has been. And that's why I was hopeful and supportive of the joint effort. Again, I'm not wed to it because if it doesn't work, it's just going to cost us more money in a different way. So, uh, if it's not working, I want to understand it, but I, but I'd like to have the two people managing it. And, uh, you know, to the extent that, uh, the superintendent of schools needs to collaborate with his, uh, seven member school committee and, uh, they jointly develop that, uh, that, that, uh, vision, I'm okay with that as long as Bob represents it. Bob is, is working that in cooperation with Rick and together they say, here's what hasn't worked in the past. Here's what we're making recommendations to move forward with. And my, again, I'm going to go back to my caution. If I don't see it, if I don't feel it, and if I don't understand it, and I don't see people being introspective to the failures, then I don't think we're going to be able to move forward. And that's where I'm going to make a recommendation that will be so- something entirely different. It may not be something either of them like, but it'll be a recommendation at least from one third of this board, uh, and see where it goes.
All right, so why don't we, does that make sense, Will?
Mm-hmm.
Let's start at that level then. Let's, let's get something joint from, uh, Rick and Bob.
Yeah.
And, um, then I think that'll take us to the next step.
Okay, I think you're right.
Okay. And, you know, I, I know, you know, the school committee wants to meet, but like I said, I, I'm not adverse to it. I just, if it is going to happen, I want it to be productive and I want us to at least have a consensus as to what we're thinking about looking at that kind of stuff.
Great.
Okay, all right, so that's something that will be ongoing. Uh, the next item that we have is a memo from the, uh, police chief, uh, about Beach Street. I'll just read it briefly. Um, he's reviewed the email regarding, uh, Ms. Linda Toskas complained about trucks that are util- utilizing Beach Street despite being told not to a few years ago. In response to Ms. Toskas' complaints, we met with the bottle glass company and expressed these concerns. In an effort to be cooperative, they have asked the trucking companies that come into their plant to utilize Route four ninety-five exits in Bellingham, come to them via Route one forty. Despite their efforts, there are several issues. First, they do not own or control the trucks. Secondly, GPS usually directs the trucks to Route one oh nine or Route eighty-five in Milford. And lastly, um, it's his understanding the town cannot require them to utilize the Bellingham exit and the town does not have the ability to restrict them from Beach Street. As for the Boston service trucks, if they are different trucks, uh, chief is unaware of any requested conditions. In any event, his understanding the town cannot restrict them from use of this public way statutorily and constitutionally as it relates to commerce. So, uh, in addition, uh, what I asked, um, uh, the selectman's office to do was put together a package of all, you may have some of this stuff, um, of all of the, uh, documents that have transpired regarding the, the Beach Street situation. Take a look at it. Your, uh, memos are in there from Mike Santora, from the police chief. It spells out what the department transportation allows, doesn't allow, and also the actions that have been taken. Um, and then if you get a sense that there's something else we can do, we can put it on for a future agenda item. Uh, is there any other old business? Bill, do you have anything?
Um, yeah, I don't know if it's old or new, but I'll bring it up now. It's the, uh, we, we received information in a quarterly report, it's actually three quarterly reports, from, uh, Milford, uh, Cable Television. Milford TV Quarterly Report is the title. Um, the only thing I'd ask is that as we receive financials, um, and there's a significance on some of funds that we're looking at here, that, that we have our director of finance look them over. Refer back to the agreement, um, making sure that, uh, you know, all the, uh, issues that we outlined in the agreement and, uh, topics are hit and addressed. And, uh, if there are any concerns or just at least maybe receive something back, let him know he's reviewed it.
Sure. He has a copy, we will have definitely.
Because I remember, I remember something in the agreement about, uh, uh, physical inventory. And I don't remember seeing it. It could be that it's just my memory at advanced age. But i- if you could, uh, check on all aspects of the agreement and, uh, make sure that, uh, that, that physical inventory exists. I know it was in the, in the agreement, so, um, I appreciate the, uh, financial information that, uh, Milford TV provided. It's extremely helpful. And I just want to have, uh, know that our director of finance looked it over and has any comments or thoughts addressed.
Yeah, that's fine. Uh, Will, any comments on this at all?
On that, no.
No, okay. All right, do you have any other items, Bill?
Uh, no, that's it for now.
Okay, uh, Will, do you have anything?
Yes. I have a couple of things. Um, one of the things we talked about, um, at the last meeting was the Prospect Heights Park. Were you able to, or did you hear back anyone, anyone from the Parks Department regarding the, the, I'm sorry, Mr. Valani, the Porta John or the, or anything that we talked about?
We, we got all of that under G five.
Oh, okay, so we can wait for that? Oh, I'm sorry, we do. Okay, I just have, they have some of the neighbors here, so I was thinking of, uh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's all, we got a number of memos on that.
Okay, yeah, I know, I read them this morning, that's right. All right, well, we'll have to wait a few more minutes for that. The other thing I wanted to talk about under old business was that I did join the task force, um, last Wednesday. And it was very enlightening. It was actually a really good experience. Uh, John Erickson, Lori Brazza, Steve Geis and Brian Arugio, uh, representing local police department. We covered, they asked me where I wanted to go. Uh, we chose, uh, Lower Water Street, um, Oliver, Thayer, Bancroft Park, Draper Park. We cut across to Lower West Cherry. We, uh, we saw a whole bunch of different things, um, a lot of things that they've addressed in the past, showing the difference that the last few years have made of them making these, uh, these visits. I did appreciate them, um, and Rick organizing them to go out at night. They're going to, I guess, now alternate between day and night, and I asked them if they would mind, uh, if I joined them like on a quarterly basis because it was something to, it was really good for me to experience. They did a great job. Uh, we interacted with a couple of property owners. We interacted with, uh, quite a few tenants. Um, we did find, um, relatively small violations that were, that were addressed and documented. We, uh, I guess the message that I walked away with was, you know, there's, there's, uh, border health violations, there's building, uh, building zone violations or building code, excuse me. There's a number of, uh, different things. Fire, we, we did find someone who was burning in a, in a contained, uh, area, but things that they shouldn't have been, so, um, the fire department worked that out. It's, uh, it was, again, it was really good to see everybody, uh, who was there and working together. But there is a difference between how some certain people choose to live or own their property rather than what is actually a violation or illegal. And that was probably the biggest thing that I walked away with. Because though maybe some of us wouldn't want our yards or our homes to look a certain way, that doesn't necessarily mean it's a violation or it's illegal. So, uh, there were very clear things that we saw, like grills on a second floor deck. They're just obviously for fire safety, those aren't allowed. And, and, you know, letters will be sent, and when we did talk to the property owners, uh, that we did interact with, I mean, everything was very cordial. There were a couple of people that I did joke with, uh, Lori Brazza about because they came out and like, hello Lori. Um, she's, she's out there, she's, she's doing her, she's doing her thing. And, uh, I just wanted to give them credit because it was something that I actually enjoy doing. And, uh, I think sometimes you obviously need a firsthand look to, uh, to see what's, what actually is going on there. So, um, I just wanted to, uh, to mention that.
Sure. Do you get a sense that it made a difference going out at the later hours as opposed to during the daytime hours?
Um, on a personal level, I did. Um, I think when I was having conversation with them, as they're walking through the neighborhoods day or after, you know, during business hours or after hours, they're still finding people in the neighborhoods to interact with. It's not that, you know, people, again, work in shifts and things of that nature, so there's always people around, um, based on what they were telling me that they interact with. Um, on a personal level, um, just because the hours were out there, people coming home from work, people were stopping, stopping us to say hello, because out of obviously the five of us, there were people driving by and someone knew one of us. Um, I, I got a couple of follow-up phone calls when I got home, just people saying, we saw you and the crew out there and we know this is going on, but it was, you know, I work all day, so as I'm coming home at seven o'clock and they're going through the neighborhood, I think, uh, I think it was very advantageous.
Good, good.
So it was a very good experience.
Good.
The only other thing I wanted to talk about, which again, which is what the packet with Beach Street, um, as we discussed, it's certainly not a surprise at this point that, alternating truck traffic and things of that nature is, is obviously pretty tough. But, um, I saw some documents that talked about doing vibration tests and things like that. Because the only thing that concerns me, if we can't stop the trucks, why are, you know, Mrs. Toskas' house or Mr. Carlino's house actually rocking? Is that, you know, is that the culverts underneath? Is that the plumbing? Is there, you know, is there something, that's a rudimentary term, but is there something underneath a very old road that is causing this? So if we can't fix one thing, can we look at another? And maybe that's obviously in here.
It's in there because, uh, Mike Santora looked at the structure of the road with the highway department.
Okay, right, now I look forward to reading that.
That's all part of it too, so.
But I don't think there's anything that prevents us from restricting it. I think there are, are things that we have to navigate through in order to, uh, put an effective, uh, restriction. But I think, um, you know, I, I recall this from two thousand and seven and, uh, so we have some history here. I, I think the thing that rings out in, uh, on this topic, I think the thing that rings out in, uh, Chief O'Loughlin's memo is that I was under the impression that back in nineteen ninety-seven, we'd have more cooperation and more assistance and more influence working through the business, uh, cooperatively. Here we are seven years later, and what we find is the first thing that Tom says in his note is firstly, they don't own or control the trucks. And we're talking about, on average, at least the, the data that I saw, two hundred and fifteen, you know, trucks, uh, a week. Uh, so it's a significant number. Um, I think we have the ability to control. I think we just have to follow a process in order to do that. So I, I don't want to rule that out. I know we've worked towards a co- cooperative means and that hasn't been highly successful.
Well, they get waxes and wanes. I mean, I think you do, and then all of a sudden they go back to different habits.
Well, change management, ownership.
Sure, 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 sure.
Truck contractors, I don't know.
But take a look at it, you'll see that, you know, if you want to do it, you've got to do a traffic study, then you've got to certify an alternate route, so that was the big problem. Um, any other items? Okay, let's move on to new business. We have a, uh, request from our town engineer to install no parking signs on Cook Street. Uh, this was received from the highway department. They repaved Cook Street. She's recommending at least three no parking this side signs to be installed on the southwest, south side of Cook Street between Main Street and Hayward. Also recommending one no parking here to corner sign be installed of house number ten. Is there a motion?
Uh, yeah, just to note that, uh, just confirmation with the comments the town administrator provided, both the highway department and police chief are in agreement with this request. So I'd make the motion to support it.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. We have a request from a organization known as Breaking AIDS Ride, looking to travel through, uh, the town of Milford on Friday, September twenty-fifth, twenty fifteen. Uh, this is a three-day bicycle ride to benefit Housing Works, a major AIDS service organization headquartered in New York City. And they're And they're looking to come through Milford approximately eight fifteen to ten thirty a.m. I believe the Police Chief has looked at this and, um, is, uh, in agreement with it.
Yeah, I see those notes on Rick's comments as well, assigned motorcycle officers to help patrol. So, yeah, while it's in a different format than we're used to, because I think, uh, it's a national organization. I think, uh, similar to what we just saw with the DOT, we'd said that we wanted Police Chief to review routes, and he has, so I'd make a motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Application from Cafe Sorrento for a, um, all-alcoholic beverage, uh, Sunday, June twenty-eighth, uh, between the hours of one and six.
Are you happy to make a motion for that?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Not all in favor? Any opposed? That is unanimous. Okay, we have our annual appointments and reappointments. Let me just see what we're looking at here. There are very few vacancies. Um, I would suggest that perhaps we hold off on filling vacancies for Capital Improvement Committee pending what the committee would like to do with the next agenda item, but if you wanted to fill it, that's, that's fine.
Yeah, good memo, Brian, by the way, just wanted to.
Okay, thank you, yeah, so we can go that. So, uh, with that, um, let's see. Bill, why don't you start off and, uh, give us the, um, appointments, reappointments?
Appointments, reappointments.
Starting with Rochelle Thompson.
Yep, and, uh, going on page two.
How far would you like to go?
Uh, why don't I go to Historical Commission and stop? I'm running out of breath.
Yeah, that'd be good.
All right. Uh, appointments, reappointments, June fifteenth meeting, Rochelle Thompson, Animal Control Officer. I'm, I'm sorry, I'd like to make a motion for Rochelle Thompson, Animal Control Officer, Keith Haynes, Assistant Animal Control Officer. Lyny Oliveri, uh, Fair Housing Director. William J. Toohey, Jr., Emergency Management Director. George Cleveland, Deputy Director. Why don't I stop there and, uh?
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
And, uh, on the recommendation of Chair and, uh, Agreed, I'd like to, uh, move beyond Capital Improvement Committee, jumping to Commission on Disability. Uh, make a motion for Susan Clark, uh, and Demetra Edwards.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Conservation Commission, reappointment of Edward Ross and Robert J. Buckley.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? Unanimous.
Chairman would like to make a motion for Regina Ferreira, Paul Gallagher, and Vincent Sicari. I can never get his name right.
Scucciari, yeah.
Scucciari, uh, for Council on Aging reappointing.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded. Any more discussion? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
This, this looks like a, uh, Fair Housing Committee redundancy, but, um, Lyny Oliveri is a member, so is Director, Fair Housing Director. Uh, now it's, uh, Fair Housing Committee membership. Lyny Oliveri, Alfred Santa Candro, Maria Valença, and, uh, that would be it for Fair Housing.
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Finance Committee, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, uh, make a motion to appoint Robert P. DeVita, Vincent Velastro, John A. Tenaro Esquire, Jerry D. Hyatt, Christopher Warren.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to hold off, uh, for purposes of discussion, geriatric authority of Milford. And, uh, well, let, uh, well, I can, I can, for the purposes of discussion, I'd like to, um, uh, we can do this now, I guess. Uh, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Barbara Oger, David Consigli, and from our Tal- Talent Bank, Tara Pine Canelli, to the Geriatric Authority of Milford Appointments.
Okay, uh, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, Barbara Oger.
Uh, David Consigli and Tara Pine Canelli. I think, uh, you know, in some of the places, you know, like we rotate, uh, elected positions, just as interested in seeing, uh, new opportunity for new members who, uh, who have expressed interest. And, uh, uh, my thinking is this isn't, these aren't necessarily positions for life for, for everyone. Um, and that, uh, you know, while people serve and provide a great deal of commitment to the community, I'd like to make a change there, and that, that change is reflected in the motion.
Okay, so what I'm going to ask you to do is to reword the motion, um, to, uh, the, uh, two and, the, the two reappointments first.
The two reappointments would be Barbara Oger and David Consigli. That's a motion.
Is there a second on that?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
And the third, the third appointment, I'd like to make to, uh, make a recommendation from our Talent Bank that it go to Tara Pine Canelli.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Uh, one opposed. I'll be voting against that. Do you want Will to do the Historical Commission?
Sure, that'd be great.
Want to start off with the Historical Commission, Will?
Sure. I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Robert Andriola, Mary Valani, and Marilyn Lovell to the Historical Commission.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded. Any more discussion? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Daniel Gregory, Peter Scandoni, Matthew Shields, and Joseph Sors to the Industrial Development Commission.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
I'd like to make a motion for Charlene Capone, Marco Cunero, and Tiffany Branco to the Milford Cultural Council.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
I'd like to make a motion for Dennis B. Carroll and Shelley Leclerc, alternate to the Personnel Board.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Donna C. Horrigan to the Registars of Voters.
Mo- mo-
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Jay Gilchrist and Joseph R. Evans, the Renewable Energy Committee.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint, to reappoint Mary Carlson and Charles C. D. Antonio, Associate Number Two, to Zoning Board of Appeals.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Sandra Caproni, Amy Tumani, and Brenda Wheelock to the Milford Youth Commission.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. And, uh, oh, this is the Town Bank application. Okay, so we're all set on that.
I think we do need to take a look at our, you know, vacancies as well, yeah.
There are not that many vacancies.
Not that many, but there are some. Hate to see boards get tied up with difficulty with summer vacations and whatnot, that, that a lot of them are doing any heavy lifting in the summer, but.
Right, right. Okay, so I think that's all of them, right, on the appointments?
Yes.
Okay, so the, the next item that we have is a memo that I asked Rick to put before this board. And you can see that, you know, wh- what I'm doing is I'm asking that we take another look at formally consolidating the capital planning process with the Finance Committee. And, uh, since two thousand and twelve, the last time the FinCom presented this option, I think they've only increased their efforts on the, uh, long-range capital plan, so that right now, in practical terms, they really hold on to the plan along with the financial implications. And I have never gotten the sense that the Capital Planning Committee has done more than really deal with what's presented to them, uh, on a basis for town meetings. And we, we have notified them in the past of that. Despite that, I, I know that they're a well-meaning group. It just doesn't seem to be a meaningful contribution, um, to, to the process. So I would like to ask the Finance Committee, along with a representative of this board and a representative from the current Capital Planning Committee, to work towards formulating a streamlined process so that we can, um, uh, review and evaluate capital needs without the redundancy that, that exists in the process today.
Yeah, I thought it was a well-crafted memo. Um, uh, I think it outlines some of the things we've talked about and our concerns. And I would agree. I agree with all your comments. I don't have any preference over which member should participate. I think, uh, each of us have a fair amount of other things that we're doing, uh, with respect to town boards and committees, but, uh, I'm open for discussion.
Okay, Will? No, I echo the sentiment, so, very well done.
Okay, well, why don't we send that off to the Finance Committee? And if they're agreeable, then, uh, we can take it up at a, a next meeting and, uh, figure out, uh, who wants to be part of that.
All right, great.
Okay, uh, let's see, we have a cup, oh.
Brian, just, uh, for clarity, it just struck me. Any past effort has been, I think, uh, an attempt has been made to, uh, address this issue from a pure Finance Committee standpoint. It, it looks like, uh, you're providing the leadership from the Board of Selectmen, and it would be my suggestion that we maintain that through the process, that it be, take their recommendations, uh, and see what we can come out with in terms of consensus. But, but the Board of Selectmen be the drivers, along with other committees who are interested in seeing this solution.
Yeah, I, I, I don't disagree with that. I mean, I think the time has come.
I do.
There's been ample opportunity, I think, to, um, change that capital process with the CIC. We, we notified them in two thousand and twelve, and, and, you know, the same things are happening. I just don't think it's a meaningful contribution to the process. And, um, meanwhile, the FinCom has, in fact, kind of redoubled their efforts and really stepped up the, the capital planning process. Okay, so we'll see what the FinCom's response is, and then we can move accordingly. We have a couple of gifts from the Benjamin Moore. Uh, the first one is two thousand and five hundred dollars to the Milford Police Department for the First Responder Unit.
Uh, yes, I make a motion to support that, uh, to accept that gift.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. And then, uh, not to be outdone, they gave a second, uh, oh, this looks like it's what, twenty-five fifty, huh?
Yeah.
Wow, the fire department gets an extra, uh,
Fifty dollars.
Fifty dollars, okay, all right, well, that's, that's fine, so that's good. Benjamin Moore's done this every year.
Very generous.
So it's, it's, it's a great, uh, thing to come from, uh, from the business, and it certainly helps the two departments.
I'd make a motion to support, uh, that as well, the fire, fire department gift from Benjamin Moore.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Uh, under correspondence, we received a letter of resignation from Debbie Small from the Middle School East Reuse Committee. Uh, she thanks us for considering her to serve on the committee and confident that the committee will fully investigate and come up with a good plan for the town. So if we could send Debbie, uh, a, a letter of thank you and that we accept her resignation with regret. We also received, uh, correspondence. This is, uh, I'm just trying to figure it out here. Uh, thi- this is indicating that I think, uh, Larry Benetti, uh, will be leaving the Capital Improvement Committee when his appointment ends this June, uh, for personal reasons. So, uh, again, if we could send Larry a letter of thank you for, for his good efforts, and also that we accept his resignation with, uh, regret. We received from the Police Chief, a list of alcohol compliance checks. On May twenty-ninth, Detective Robin Pavier and Detective Kyle Osuza conducted alcohol compliance checks on forty-two businesses that are licensed to serve alcoholic beverage. A nineteen-year-old female was utilized as an undercover operative during the operation. Forty-one businesses were found to be in compliance, because they asked the operative for identification. When she could not produce it, they refused to sell alcoholic beverage to her. However, Prezo's Restaurant was found to be in violation. We have a separate notice of the compliance check violation, uh, indicating that at eight thirty-two p.m. the undercover operative went into Prezo's and ordered a Bud Light bottle. The bartender later identified, served the alcoholic beverage without, without, without asking for identification, and, uh, the undercover operative paid four dollars fifty-two cents with a marked twenty-dollar bill. The bartender provided a, uh, receipt along with the change. The detectives then entered the premises, notified the manager, and identified the bartender. Both the manager and the bartender were extremely apologetic for the violation. So that's what we have before us. We also have notification from the Town Administrator indicating that there was change to the, uh, rules and regulation of licensing authority on October twenty-eight, uh, two thousand and thirteen, um, which indicates that the Section one point zero eight, a compliance check penalty, uh, first offense. On a first offense of a sale to a minor by a licensee, under Chapter, uh, GL Chapter one thirty-eight, Sections twelve or fifteen, during the course of an enforcement authority compliance check, the penalty to be imposed upon the licensee shall be not less than one day's suspension.
And, and we've confirmed this is first offense?
Yes.
So...
So based, based on our own rules, we have to apply at least a one-day suspension for this, based on our rules?
Yeah, and, and I remember when, when we did this, you know, I've always been of the mindset that these compliance checks are supposed to be educational, uh, not punitive. I, I, I don't like that, having that mark on an otherwise very good business. I mean, we've never had a problem with, 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 uh, with Prezo's, and, um, something like this. It's just, it's just unfortunate. Um, Will?
No, I echo your sentiment, um, and this is obviously the first time I'm, I'm dealing with this. So this is our own ruling that we, on a first-time offense, even after all these years, that Prezo's in business, that we suspend them for a day?
Well, these are the rules and regulations. Uh, it was, uh, adopted in October of two thousand and thirteen to change so that there would be the one-day license suspension on a compliance check.
Okay. Specifically for the compliance check, okay.
Yes, 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 yeah, I don't, you know, it wasn't something that I, um, think is fair, but, you know, it's what happened. So I'm really not, you know, I, I prefer to really look at the compliance checks as sort of an educational-type thing for the restaurant establishments, and then look at the violations that happen in the course of business, depending upon the extent of the violation and, and the record, and then, and then make a decision accordingly.
We can revisit this. Um, I'm not sure revisiting in the midst of a compliance issue is the right thing to do, but,
That's fair.
Certainly, it's something we can revisit.
Yeah, I mean, um, what does the board want to do? Would we, would we have them in for a hearing, Rick?
I believe that would be what this board would do, schedule them for a hearing.
Okay. Well, we can do that anyway, if the, if the board were to-
Yeah, we can still have a conversation with them regardless of the outcome, right?
Uh, sure, we can, yeah, we can schedule a hearing, sure.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Get them in, Bill, and then
Sure.
take it from there.
Sure.
Okay. All right, so why don't we schedule that hearing then, Rick?
Sure.
We can fit it in. Okay. All right, uh, let's see. The last item that we have under correspondence is, uh, from the Milford Police Chief regarding the Prospect Heights Park. Um, to the best of my recollection, a couple of years ago, the volleyball games moved from Fino Field to Prospect Heights. When the Park Department commenced with a project to reseed and repair Fino Field, because, uh, it had been stripped down to the dirt by constant use for volleyball. When the volleyball players were at Fino Field, the Park Department received complaints that people associated with the volleyball were selling and/or consuming alcoholic beverages, were selling food, and were using the shrubs on the park property as a bathroom facility. And there was also an issue with limited parking. As a result of these complaints, the chief assigned bilingual officers and detectives and the Sector Patrol Officer to check the area for violations. Uh, it is important to note that it is the chief's understanding that in attempt to alleviate the concerns related to bathroom facilities, the volleyball players reached an agreement with the Park Department to place a porta potty at the location at the expense of the volleyball players. Since moving to the park at Prospect Heights, the chief has continued- Since moving to the park at Prospect Heights, the chief has continued the assignment of bilingual detectives and officers and sector patrol officers to check the area for people consuming alcohol or selling alcohol beverages or food. Detective Carlo Souza has been involved in addressing these concerns for a number of years. As he conducts a check, he communicates directly with park director Mike Brishani. Detective Souza has personally checked people's coolers, and he has not reported any violations. With regard to the bathroom facilities, it is the chief's understanding that the park department reached a similar arrangement to that which they had at Fino Field as it relates to the porta potty. As for calls for police services, a review of the records for the past year indicates the following calls related to the volleyball games. June 1st, 2014, complainant called the police department to report that immigrants are using the park every weekend to play volleyball, and they are urinating in the bushes, smashing bottles, and screaming. Officers responded and reported there was no alcohol, nor did they see anyone urinating in the bushes. June 14th, 2014, complainant called the police department to report that youths were breaking bottles near the fence. Responding officers reported that they could not locate the youths. April 13th, 2015, complainant called the police department to report that the people playing volleyball are urinating in the bushes. Responding officers reported that they did not observe anyone urinating in bushes. The issue that I believe has become more prominent with the introduction of volleyball games at Prospect Heights is related to parking. The parking spaces that are but the town park on Prospect Heights are generally utilized by the residents who reside across the street from the park. As you know, many, if not all, of these residents have placed their address numbers on the parking spaces. The issue that is presented to the police is when someone other than one of these residents parks in a space, the resident believes that they have a property interest or a priority interest in the parking space, they notify the police to have the vehicle moved or towed. Given that this is town-owned parkland, the responding police officers cannot direct the other motorists to move their vehicle, nor can they tow them. So as you can imagine, the situation results in tension between the local residents and the people using the town park. With the, with regard to the actual use of the town park at Prospect Heights for volleyball games, or for that matter, other activities at other town park facilities, generally speaking, the police department only becomes involved when there's a prohibited use that the park director is attempting to enforce, or where an organized youth team has a permit from the parks department for a particular use on a particular day or dates and time, particularly when individuals without a permit are refusing to yield the use of the facility to the permit holder. Chief indicates that he will continue to have officers and detectives monitor this park facility and others to ensure compliance with the town bylaws and the laws of the Commonwealth. We also received correspondence from the parks director, Mike Brishani, directed to the town administrator. The Prospect Heights Park is town property under the jurisdiction of the park commissioners. It is my understanding that pavement and first row of parking spaces on both sides of the park also belong to the town. You and I discussed a complaint of two weeks ago by a resident, and the town's response, it was reported that a group of people using the park was selling food and alcoholic beverage. The day I received the complaint, I contacted and reported this to Carlo Souza of the Milford Police Department. Officer Souza visited the park that night. He reported to me he had a conversation with the park users about the need to pick up trash before they leave the park for the day. He also reported to me that he did not see any food being sold and did not see any alcoholic beverages on site or in any of the coolers. The same person who reported the above information also told me that the porta john on site was locked. I checked, it was locked, and the lock has since been removed. We also received notification from the Board of Health for requirements of portable chemical toilets, which I'm, I'm not going to read. I think the only applicable item is that it needs to be accessible to the public, and I think that means it, it, it can't be locked.
Number three also, Mr. Chairman, that it should be secured.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Three and number eight.
Okay, so the portable toilet must be properly secured in order to prevent the unit from being relocated, and then number eight, it has to be open to, to the public, which I, I take it as meaning it can't be locked. So this is what we received in, in response to, to the issues that you had brought up at the last meeting.
No, I appreciate this. And even though I'm in total agreement, and, and I don't think there's anything to disagree with, with what the, what the chief wrote, what the chief wrote, and even Mike Brishani's correspondence and him working as he did so quickly with Detective Souza, and it is unlocked, I know that they jumped on that immediately, and obviously the Board of Health was very cooperative in, in, in jumping on that immediately as well. You know, the thing, I guess, that, that I know a number of the residents that I walked up there with was that, you know, they look out their porches from Water Street, or when they're across the street on Prospect Heights, you know, at Fino Field, if, when the porta john was down there, no one was living right there and staring at it all day and, as it gets warmer, and dealing with it. So I think that, you know, again, I respect the fact, as we all should, that the parks come under the park commissioners, and they're three great guys, and Mike does a good job. But I'm hoping that we can, you know, come to some arrangement that neighbors don't have to wake up in the morning and stare at this, which, by the way, if we want to get technical, it was moved, and it's 75 feet away from the houses, it's not 100. And I don't mind doing this, but these are the regulations, so I think that they need to address it, and I'm sure they will. But in all fairness, you know, I don't think this is anything that people necessarily have to look at. The Milford Daily News did a, did a nice job, an article covering that story as well, because again, the litter up there has been beyond acceptable. So again, then on a windy day or a stormy day, it's not just confined to the park, it's on the street, it's on the neighbors, it's on Water Street, it's in, it's in Russell's shop, at Jean's Variety. So that, you know, we're all making an honest effort here, and again, the same day, you know, I'm on Lower Water Street, having the positive experience I did with Task Force, then I go up to the top of the street and, and, and we're seeing trash and things like that. So, so with all due respect to the, to the park commissioners and things, I think that, you know, we should all be able to, to work together to, and maybe there's, and maybe there's help that, that they need, that, you know, we just need to have a conversation with, so I don't know, I'm, maybe I, I'm going to ask for your advice and for Bill's to see, you know, the town administrator, where we go from here, but I don't think that people urinating in the bushes outside of people's homes isn't right either, but them having to stare at the, you know, at a porta john as you're having visitors come over for Sunday dinner, or, or, or just taking a walk through the neighborhood, which, by the way, with, you know, with Sue Clark and everything, the neighborhood looks fantastic. All the curbing, all the streets, you know, everything, and then we have, you know, a number of these issues. So it's just, people, people are, people are getting upset in every neighborhood, and I guess we just have to take care of it one neighborhood at a time. But I guess I'm, you know, we all have our, we all have our, our pet peeves and our issues, and if I have to be a haunt about this type of stuff, I will, because I, I'm not sure where we, where we go from here. I guess I'll reach out to the parks commissioners again and, and to the Board of Health, just to see if we can, we can get that done, because these are the, you know, majority of Milford people living up there for long periods of time, sometimes generations, and, and even in the audience here, obviously some of the neighbors sat here for, you know, two hours and did that, and I didn't know they were coming, but I'm happy you're here, I recognize my former neighbors. So I just hope that, that this is something, Rick, and I, I don't know if we can, not to put everything on you, or I'll be present, but maybe we can have a meeting with Mike Brishani and just, just chat with him. This certainly isn't anything, you know...
Yeah, I mean, unfortunately, litter's a problem in every park. I, you know, see it at town park when I go past the basketball court in the morning. Plains Park, I mean, I don't know what it takes to change people's attitudes, it's so frustrating.
I don't think we are, I think we have to clean it.
That, that, that's what happens.
Yeah.
So they, they have to clean the trash everywhere, what they do, you know, so, I know, litter is, it's, it's horrible to see in any park.
Yeah.
You know? It's even on Plains Park, and you could go to where the softball field was, and you could tell up between center and left field where the soccer game was. And you can see, and I don't even think, think it's the kids, it's the parents.
Yeah.
You know, all the plastic bottles, the Dunkin' Donuts coffee cups, all of this, you know, junk. So it's, it's a big problem, not only in that location, all the parks. Bill, did you want to have any comments on that?
Yeah, just a general observation, what I've not heard out of this is what the parks department is doing in working with the, the people that they permit to improve it. So, so, and I, I'm assuming things are going on, I just haven't seen anything from the parks department that tells me what they're doing with the people that, that they're permitting through that process. So if the, if the leagues want to continue to use it, if the people up at Prospect Heights want to continue to be permitted, I'm expecting the parks department and the director to be proactive. Frankly, I'm not really impressed that the, that the, Mike Brishani contacted, upon a complaint contacted our detective. I expect Mike Brishani to get in a car, I expect the parks department to get in a car, and I expect them to go make observations, right? So this is management by walk-around, it's simply what Will did when he walked around after he got complaints about trash. And if we're, if we're a point of contact for residents about our parklands being dirty and overrun by trash, I expect solutions to come from the park department, and I haven't heard those yet, other than they contacted the Milford, Milford Police Department.
I think that, I, I, I think the, I, I, I think the reason why he contacted the detective is because of an alleged criminal event, which, which we would definitely want him to get the police there.
I understand, but, but a criminal event is not somebody with a gun, the question is, is somebody up there selling it? And the question is, did Mike, Mike Brishani observe anything of these events? Because when a police car rolls in, that's the, the last person that's going to observe it, and frankly, you know, I expect the parks commissioners and the, the director to be aware of what's happening and not just be told by the police department. There's a, there's a person making a complaint. I didn't see in, in, in there, did he contact the person making the complaint? As to the time and the location, maybe he can go up there and make an observation. We're not expecting Mike Brishani to make arrests, he can, but certainly make some observations. The, the park area and the trash up there wasn't something that was created in a day, and it's certainly something that people have been talking about for a while, and now the question is, why don't the parks department, why don't they know, know about it? And if they know about it, the question that I'd like to see is, what's the parks department doing about it with the people that they're permitting, beyond contacting the police?
Yeah.
And I haven't seen that here. You know, we have to be good neighbors.
In all fairness, excuse me, in all fairness, I don't know if they've been asked, we just have had this conversation, and it's, and it's starting, so, you know.
So I, I think that's the next course of action, is to say, look, parks lands a but neighborhoods, we're being contacted by neighbors, and what we'd like to see is what the parks department plans on doing, how they've been addressing it, this, I'm guessing isn't news to them, right? So how would they go about it? Because they're elected officials, and it's under their control.
Yeah, again, and, and it's not just this field.
No, no.
They, they deal with it everywhere.
I agree, but they're permitting those groups.
And, well, sometimes they aren't, I mean, I, you know, the kids that play basketball and stuff, you know, because, and, and I see it, and I know you say that trash can't be generated one day, you'd be surprised what can get generated at town park.
Town park, I've seen.
After a basketball game, so, I mean, they're, they're dealing with this, you know, all the time, and it's my understanding that every day in the summer, the first few hours in the morning, that's what they do, it's trash pickup at all the different spots.
Yeah, we do...
But, you know, why don't you, I mean, I, I get the sense that you want a little bit more information from the parks commissioners.
Yes, for sure.
So why, why don't we send a request to them as to, you know, what they're doing
Yeah.
about the, the trash situation and the, the permitted leagues or, or groups that they have at their fields.
And even in the cases where there's non-permitted activity, that's more problematic, let's explain what they're doing proactively and reactively, right? There's some proactive activity, that, things that can happen, and then there's reactive. I guess it's a combination, I'm going to guess it's going to be a combination of both, there probably worked solutions. I think there was somebody that wanted to address the...
Well, why don't we get a deep, deeper memo from the parks commissioners about what's going on?
Okay.
Okay, did, did you want to say something to us?
Yeah, just want to ask you one thing, Phil, the park commission, he, uh, well, the 2D, that's Memorial Day, all right?
Excuse me, could I, could you sit down there? Because the TV's trying to catch you.
Yeah, exactly, Memorial Day day. Some kid, they come around, drive a bicycle, cut their flag down, all right? My brother and the, my neighbor called the cops. He got the flag, never put the flag back, why? No time yet, or for some reason, no one... That's Memorial Day, that's the problems, to me, that's the day.
Did you talk to, did you talk to the parks commissioners about that?
They do what they want up there.
I call the chief, very rich, you go there, the cop, very rich, another cop, he go there, cut the, the kids put the flag down. The cop, very rich, cut the rope, I'll take the flag, he be at, tomorrow be, today, almost two weeks, the flag never go back.
See?
See, I go give him for the town commission, I never see the flag back.
The town park commissioners.
Okay, so you, you'd have to address that with the parks, I don't know anything about it, the flag.
I understand, I understand.
They're, they're separate.
Yes.
Independently elected, and they're the ones that have the legal authority and jurisdiction over the area that, that you're concerned about. They, they have regular meetings, they're, they're folks that, you know, you can get ahold of them in the phone book, call them, I mean, they're, they're the people that you need to contact, okay? I mean, we'll, we'll, we'll do it for you on our end and, and raise these concerns.
Yes.
But, but they're the ones that have the direct control.
That's the day happened, yeah, I say, well, that's like slap you in the face.
It's like they're taking over.
Of course.
They're taking over.
The kids are not going to paper.
The kids don't even have any place to play anymore, you know, they can't even go to the park.
Well, because you know, no, no, no...
Like, you said, you said the chief, he send the ladder, say, send the, uh, car, something there, I never see a cop there.
I've never seen anybody up there.
I'm there at 6:30, at 10:00, 9 o'clock, I live across the street, you know.
We don't see anything.
I never see a cop there.
Unless somebody calls. I mean, the kids got a little grandstand, they can't even go in the park.
But, but, but a lot of times Detective Souza is not in uniform, and he's not, and he's not in a cruiser.
I don't, I don't count.
You know what I mean, so, so I don't know, but I mean, all I can...
It's like, you know, the little kids can't play there.
Yeah, this, this is what the chief brought forward. I mean, the only thing I can tell you is, is just to continue to log your complaints, we'll indicate to, to, to both the police department and the parks department, the complaints you're bringing here, but ultimately, they're the ones that are responsible.
And maybe, maybe there's an opportunity, Mr. Chairman, if I might, to have a higher police presence, and maybe that's something, especially on the higher activity evenings, that they're more visible. I, I, this is the first I'm hearing about the flag, I, I'm troubled, we're all troubled by vandalism, right? If somebody steals a flag, cuts down a flag.
That's the main, that's vandalism.
So that's a piece of it.
If you want to do that, you wear a flag.
That's a piece of it.
Vandalism and it's theft.
Yeah, I don't know that it was somebody who was documented, not documented, that stole the flag, I don't know, what their immigration status is, and I really don't want to go there, but what I do want to say is, it's also, it's also troubling for me that we don't understand our flag inventory in our parks and to know whether we're maintaining flag protocol during very key events. So I would expect that before two weeks passes that...
Yes.
That people are aware that a, a flag has been vandalized and that we try to get another one up there.
You don't want to take it off, the cop. He's like, Jeff, very rich, you know, that's what he pick up. I'm there.
Okay.
You don't want, the kids, the, the kids there, they're, they're little kids, he take the, broke the, the rope.
Yeah, yeah.
I call the cop, me and my neighbor, call the cop, the cop will come down, cut the rope, see, I take the flag somewhere, he put it on tomorrow, there today, never show up.
Right.
You call the, my neighbor called the park commission, four times already, never call them back.
All right, Will?
Well, Will, Will voiced the concerns that you brought onto the parks directors. There's three park commissioners who are elected, just like we are. You're the voters, you can vote them in, vote them out, and, and they're responsible for that area, and we'll also talk to the police chief to see if there's any other presence that they can put there. But if you have any problems, report it to the police. Just get it on record, just get it on record.
I come on board every day, you don't need, you don't go there, you don't care, cop don't care no more.
By the way, this is your meeting as well. Have you, have you attempted to go to a parks meeting?
I go once, long time ago, uh, what was his name? I'm, five years ago.
Yeah.
Okay.
I never go, I never go, because the, the guy's in the park commission, I'm not printing before.
Okay, all right.
Now he's the first guy.
Maybe somebody else goes.
All right, okay, well, we, we hear what you're saying, and Will...
The thing for the, the thing for the night, you're supposed to be under 25 feet off the house, you should get a 75 feet, because every morning we worry about the house, I think, you know.
Yeah, that's all you see.
The, the, the porta john?
Twenty nine years.
Yeah.
You're supposed to be 25 feet off the house, you get 75.
Yeah, living next to a park should be a pleasurable thing.
Yeah.
To be of benefit.
Yeah, you've got to see that all day and every day, you're sitting on the porch and you have to see.
The summer time, you don't.
Well, thank you, we heard what you said. We'll communicate that to the parks department and the police on our end too. We'll do the best we can for you.
Thank you guys for waiting.
Thank you.
I don't want to, he talked about the beginning, so. About the principles you have, the principles for, you live in the club, we're going to come up here.
Yeah.
Doesn't make any sense to me. For thirty-eight years, I live in this country, I would start in an Armenian club, that's a family clinic and all. I was in the club, what, you don't need the car, you talking about the traffic, you don't need the car, you come down.
Yeah.
So for the benefit of the record though, can we just get your name to the secretary so that if we want to correspond with you or contact you?
After the... And P E R.
I think it just will know them anyway, right?
I don't know.
I think you will know them all, so.
Okay, well, thank you very much, we still got some other things that we need to take care of. Thank you. We have correspondence from the town engineer indicating the town recently bid and awarded the Congress Terrace Main Street Culvert Replacement Project. The general contract was awarded J.A. Polito of Shoesbury. There's going to be a pre-construction meeting with the contractor, the town and all utility companies. They anticipate start of construction after the July 4th weekend. There will be a public informational meeting for residents of the areas where construction will be conducted. The meeting is a chance to meet the contractor, ask questions about the project, specifically questions about the resident's property. The contractor and the design engineer will also be in attendance. There will be only one meeting, but any questions that arise during the project should be directed to the town engineer or the highway department. The informational meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, June 17th at 7:00 PM in this room at the Milford Town Hall.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, if I may, it's actually going to be in room fourteen.
Be room fourteen?
I'm sorry.
Okay, correct that. Are they going to send out a different notice indicating it be in room fourteen?
We're going to post here so the people, if they come here, they will know.
Okay, so they'll just direct them upstairs, okay, all right. And that's all the items that we have. We do have an executive session to consult with Town Council Moody about the Milford Water Company. I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
This is in regards to potential, the investigation into the cost and acquisition?
Yes.
Okay, I'd be happy to support that.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded, roll call, vote, Bill? Will?
Yes, I...
I too vote in the affirmative. Thank you, good night, we will not be returning to open session.